I've pronounced your name correctly.
Correct.
Who is from the DEP and he was here on March 11th to help us understand more deeply the revisions to shoreline zoning that the DEP has proposed and also as they relate to the updating of our own shoreline zoning ordinance. And we got stuck on a couple of questions that we really felt we needed the answers to in order to proceed with our shoreline zoning maps, which have to be adopted by law with because of federal legislation with flood hazard insurance, flood hazard maps. And so this is a follow-up and we have Judy Colby George with us who is doing our GIS mapping for us. And it's really behooves us to have both of them communicating because some of Judy's questions really the planning board and the planner couldn't answer, but the DEP can. So we're hoping that this whole meeting with all of us together will clear things up. So I'm calling this meeting to order. That's the agenda. We aren't going to take a vote. We don't have a form, but we're not going to take a vote. So I'd like to, starting with Judy, have folks introduce themselves.
Judy Colby George from Viewers.
Ed Simmons.
Oh my gosh.
Ed Simmons.
And I just kind of felt like the product that we came out with met their standards, but it didn't totally make sense. It was hard for the homeowners to understand. I think it would have been easy for the codes office to interpret because it just, you know, this is the standard, this is what it shows on the map. But I just feel like we kind of missed the mark a little bit and I am really interested in figuring out what are, what we're asking for to figure out what our next step is. And I asked Judy to pull up Pole Island because I feel like it's a great example. But Judy has no idea where Pole Island is.
I did. I did have a few things before we.
Oh yes, I'm so sorry Jeff.
Oh, no problem, no problem at all. I didn't really have this all to myself until now.
Before you start, I just want to, I just want to add to what Margaret said, which is that, and it was something that you said at the March 11th meeting, which is that while these maps aren't legal maps, but they are actually used to define the boundaries of the zone. So it's, they kind of have their foot in both camps, which is why the homeowner who looks at the maps was so concerned about what, how their property was designated.
Well, they are legal maps. If I said they weren't, I really misspoke.
Okay.
I mean, they're, once you adopt them, once the zone shown, that's a legal requirement.
But the absolute boundary is not necessary.
The absolute boundary can be measured. The map shows that the zone exists, but then you go find whatever the hat is on that property and measure it.
Okay.
So it's open to interpretations and things like that, boundary lines, but I mean, it is a legal document.
Okay, thank you.
For sure. So, sorry if I misspoke.
No, I didn't.
So the FEMA maps have driven a lot of municipalities to look at the resource protection district and remapping. Margaret kind of had the lead, had the head there early on and I gave her the existing policy that we had and we kind of turned through it. It was pretty eye-opening for me last time I was here to see the struggle. Not only board members, but community members had some questions. So other, there's four of us in the state, four shoreline zoning coordinators, others have been running into this. So we actually all kind of got together and really come up hopefully with a more simplified understanding of it. I mean, the old one I struggled with, it was like almost a negative and I don't know, it just, it didn't make sense. Basically what we're looking at now for looking at maps is as if there are two structures within 500 feet of shore frontage, it's going to be currently developed or dropping the hole as long as it's maintained in 1,000 feet. And that was always a little bit confusing. So hopefully that's a simpler way to look at things. We're willing to look at it in all zones, not just the wildlife, which is where it was developed, but also the hundred-year floodplain, also in contiguous, the two main areas, just contiguous slopes. So I think that would simplify how this is being looked at. I mean, basically you're looking at measuring between dwellings, are they within 500 feet? And just going along the shoreline, looking at the shore frontage. I mean, some areas just fall right out, you know, there are going to be RP, there's nothing there. And then other areas, you know, that's, there's just, they're lined right up. So, and it would be the whole property, once two dwellings are within 500 feet, those lot, the RP is drawn on lot lines, you know, that's, that lot is out, those two lots are out or whatever, how many lots are out. It's just we're using dwellings to identify the, you know, the criteria of currently developed.
You said structures. Do you mean principles, principal structures?
Dwellings, yeah, dwellings. A boathouse just sitting there, we wouldn't count.
So if you, if you look at the Pole Island example.
Yeah, let's go. I just wanted to make sure that we kind of were all working on the.
Wait, I have one more question before we get to Pole Island. You said that the word developed was meant for the inland fishery, the wading bird habitat?
That's where it first started.
But even though it's like at the beginning of RP, so it would, you would think that it applies to every category.
It does apply to every category. Where we're seeing it, where it was mostly of concern, I don't know if you were involved in this stuff in 2007 when all the IWWH came out, there was a lot of, and the Department of State said you had to put this in RP. You don't have to anymore, but that was a big ask. And so they were looking for criteria that you wouldn't have to because some of these areas, people live there. And again, that's the same problem. And I, so I mean, it's, it applies to all of them. Where I'm seeing it now, I mean, that's, the IWWH has kind of all settled out and communities have it or they don't because you don't have to have it anymore. So what's really brought it to our attention this time is the FEMA maps because it's having, you know, widespread change on RP. I mean, the continuous slopes, contiguous slopes hasn't really changed much, but we're throwing that in there as well while municipalities are remapping, you can take a look at this as well. But it applies to everything. And if there's something other than what I've brought up FEMA or slopes, talk about that too.
Is this going forward as far as adding new dwellings that are part of that?
If you're remapping your RP, you can look at current and past mapping, though it's all up for grabs. I think Harpswell didn't have their RP accurately mapped, so it's kind of like we're beginning.
Starting over, so if.
But if there was an RP and we're remapping, we can look at the whole thing. You don't have to apply the, what we've come up with as a definition for currently developed. That would be more restrictive. Municipalities can be more restrictive.
Right, but we'd have to justify it to the people who we tell we can't build a house there. That's the problem.
I'm not saying you should be more restrictive. I totally understand.
I understand that.
And that was a question that was asked and yes, you can be more restrictive and I'm very familiar with hurdles to being more restrictive.
Okay, I understand. And I'm not being critical. I, if you look at Pole Island, that iteration is different than the iteration that we had on, when we started this project, we had no RP on Pole Island.
Okay, so why is the RP there now?
I don't know.
There's two reasons there's RP on Pole Island. The first, the south end is because it's in the flood zone and the west side is because it's got sustained slopes of 20% or more. But because the other end of the, other side of the island has houses, it's not RP, even though it is still seep or even though it might still be in the flood zone.
Okay.
So it just, it ends up people feeling like they're, you know, they're being singled out because these properties are not developed, those ones are, so they don't get.
Which, which, now did the, I can't see the lot lines, like I see towards the top, it looks like the island's split in half, but then.
These go all the way across.
So they just go all the way across?
Yeah.
And so.
Right, but take a look at the south side.
Okay.
Now, there are three houses on the south side.
Mm-hmm.
They are probably within 500 feet of each other.
Mm-hmm.
And that guy, it's a single lot.
Mm-hmm.
I want to build a fourth house and why can't I build a fourth house when there's already three within 500 feet, which exceeds the density on my property? Now, I understand, it really depends on how you define an area in your definition of built up.
Developed.
Developed. If you say the area is any area you pick and not a lot line and not a lot, it does, that whole area extends more than 1,000 feet, but the, but the south side looks pretty built up with three houses already.
I mean, wouldn't density here.
The one that's in the green is a house.
Well, it's still within 500 feet, so anywhere along that curve at the bottom is within 500 feet, let's say, let's assume, of the two that are houses.
You're, you're looking at the frontage. I mean, this is like the perfect, like a difficult example where you're on a peninsula and the frontage basically, I mean, you have to, on this one, I would interpret that as instead of using shore frontage, kind of just go along the outside and look at the frontage there and what's developing. You also get into the density, is a fourth house even allowed on that lot? How does RP change anything?
Well, let's say they subdivided that into two lots, which they can do without getting approval.
Well, they would need to meet shoreline zoning requirements. I don't know, you know, what the lot size is, what the shore frontage is. There's a lot of things that go, I mean, they do need to not create a lot that isn't in compliance with the law. They can't make a new non-conforming lot. It gets complicated if you've got three structures on it because now you're like, when were the structures built? Were they predating shoreline zoning? If so, there's rules of construction for trying to break that lot apart. You try and make each lot more non-conforming or more conforming, most conforming possible. I mean, this is a really tough example of, you know, I want to break off another lot. There's a lot more than just whether or not we're calling this RP or limited residential. Even if you call it limited residential, there's still a lot of questions.
Limited residential is our shoreline residential.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, doesn't matter.
Thank you.
And that's what it was before. The whole island was shoreline residential. You know, and I think we're sort of singling out some of the shoreline residential zones and throwing them in RP when in reality, the majority of our shorefront is in the CF zone, which doesn't have that as an issue. And you look at the map, it's all pink.
Like if Judy was to zoom out, a lot, oh, not that far. Because you'll see a lot around Pole Island there is all pink, which is commercial fishing.
And so when we go to the voters and we all of a sudden have, how many properties at the last count, 500 properties?
I really can't remember.
That are new to RP, we're going to have a, we're going to have a lot of unhappy people. And they're going to want to know.
That's going to happen, that's got to happen. I mean, the Harps, the town of Harpswell had incorrectly mapped RP. This is part of the pain, growing pain of actually catching up. If you had the proper RP to begin with, there wouldn't be 500 people all of a sudden. I'm sorry to, you know, kind of be that guy, you know, but that's kind of the way it is. I mean, you weren't in compliance to begin with, so yes, this is going to be a big step, but it's required by law.
And I understand that.
And the currently developed is a break. It's like, okay, you're out. You know, and I understand that, you know, people aren't going to be happy, but that's, that's the law. And, you know, there's good reason to not have people developing these areas as a town, as a municipality, big picture wise.
So another way to look at it is applying the rules that have existed all along, have been many, many times.
Well, but that's, that's what I wanted to, that's.
Now, now we're applying to the folks that should have been prior years ago.
We said that, but nobody was satisfied with that answer.
But let me just make the point that I wanted to make was the definition of built up that you have provided, that the DEP has said is the one we should use, the 500 and 100, is not codified anymore. Nope. That's my problem, is that you guys are coming up with a rule, not you particularly, but the DEP is saying you should use this rule. It's very difficult to understand what the area is that you're talking when you look at each area. My concern is twofold. One, that we're going to get challenges and it isn't just going to be a bunch of angry people, it's going to be people that have the wherewithal to contest that. And we have to stand up for it and that costs the town money. And I would hesitate to recommend to the select board that they, you know, do something that's going to cost them a lot of dough because they can't support it. And when you take away someone's right to build a house on their land, you darned about, well, better be right. I mean, that's all I'm asking for, is how do we define this so that people can understand it, the 500 and the 100 test?
I did lay out a different test, but I want to go right back to something you just said. We're not taking their land.
No.
We're changing, if it was LR and now it's RP, there's nothing on it, they can still build on it. There's different restrictions.
Yeah, but there's a limit.
If you have, do you have a special exception in your, for the RP?
What, the 1,500 square feet?
Yeah, it's 1,500 square feet, which doesn't help a lot of people when they're building mega mansions.
But isn't it also, if this is my lot, half of it's in RP and half of it's not?
Kind of like the south, the south lot on Pole Island.
For you guys to grant the 1,500.
Look at how far the RP zone comes in though.
That's, that's my.
It's not 75 feet. That's not 75 feet. This is a big island.
Yeah.
And I'll show you the same thing at the tip of Dixon Point in Lowell Cove.
So this is, this is, how, what's the depth on that? What is, what is the depth from approximately? What are we talking?
This is about 190.
Okay, so we're, it's all within the shoreline zone.
That's where the floodplain goes.
Yeah, no, it's, but it's all within, we're not talking 500 feet.
Somebody wants to sue to build in the floodplain.
Yeah.
Well, that would have different issues. That's right.
But that's what the, I guess, that's what the RP is. It's the floodplain or it's a 20% slope.
Exactly. I think Howard's right and Jeff is right too. The way that we explain this is going to be really critical and I think it's going to take some serious background work to educate landowners about why this is happening because they're going to see it as a military change for them. But there are reasons, as Jeff said, that are not only protect the property owner, but protect the water quality for the marine environment. And so really we have to be able to explain that. The other thing that Howard said, which I, I am fully in agreement with, is if I can't explain why this is, why these changes are happening as a planning board person, then I'm, I'm going to be loathe to go up in front of town meeting and ask folks to support it. And right now, I don't feel like I can explain it very well.
That's really what happened last time too.
And the change in our definition isn't going to make that simpler?
I think, I think it is definitely simpler.
I don't know how many it'll take out, how many more houses you'll be able to take out, but it seems, you know, more understandable and maybe you need time to think about or.
So here's a question. Could we satisfy your rules, like say, instead of putting the 20% slope in resource protection, could we just write in our ordinance that you can't build on slopes that are 20%? So we can avoid zoning it RP and just make an ordinance change?
Are you talking about RP a slope throughout the whole 250 or are you talking about a slope that's, you know, 100 feet? I mean, I mean, where it comes down, what a lot of the, what I've seen on slopes, like what a lot comes down to is they're not able to do the point system out front. They want a clear for the view, for the openness, to get air flowing, for whatever reasons they want to clear for. It really doesn't, you know, I mean, unless it's for the whole 250 and then it can limit the size of what they're building. And, you know, it limits the cleared openings in that, which can be beneficial because if you've got a great big huge cleared openings, you've got a lot of stormwater going down a steep slope, which usually isn't a good, good combination. So, I mean, I don't know, you could do that across the board. I mean, what was that again?
I just, people don't want their house, their property's own resource protection. But if you say, Sam Alexander is a perfect example, you say, Sam says, I don't want that to be resource protection. And you say, well, do you want to build on your 20% slope? Well, no, I'm never going to build on it. So my thought was like, maybe there's a different way that we could regulate it without people feeling like their rights are being taken from them. Because they don't want to build on the steep slopes, but they also don't want to be zoned resource protection.
That's not really transparent though.
No.
And you are mistransparency, so.
No, it's not transparent. I just thought maybe it was a viable solution.
And it doesn't, isn't the map a legal document?
Yeah.
The map has to match what is true in the written document.
Yeah.
Yes, there is, no.
No. I understand Jeff's point about, about clearing trees because there's very limited tree clearing that you can do in the RP zone.
I almost feel from a public policy standpoint, that we are going to have to bite the bullet on this. It's going to be, it's going to be a whole education program that we're going to have to think through. It's going to require mailing to everybody, a really good explanation in the mailing, good online website documentation, and then a series of public hearings, probably not public, but workshops or meetings on a neighborhood level.
Totally.
And I think we need to start planning that out.
But Jeff, you have this new rule written down, correct? The one that you were.
Yeah.
Do we have that?
Probably not. I didn't really email anything out prior to this meeting.
Okay. It would be great to have that and also have a bunch of examples. If, for example, you have this and this, then it's this. If your situation is this, to give people, sometimes the ordinance or the rule by itself seems very complex to understand.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm thinking about real life examples and I think we will have to have that if we do it. I need it myself.
Yeah, well, I think ideally you would, you would ask questions about something in Harpswell.
Right.
Is what, you know, happens in Phippsburg, happens in Phippsburg. I mean, what are your, what's going on in Harpswell? I mean, where is the board, you know, getting stocked? Where are people asking a lot of questions and things like that? See, I talked with Margaret, mostly emailed with Margaret, you guys worked on things and then came up with a map and had a very hard time with it. And I was, I kind of missed all that in the middle and I'd like to be involved in the middle. As, as we work through this, we develop examples in Harpswell for your planning board. I mean, this is why, this is why we did this on that lot. I mean, I need more time with the peninsula one, Dow Island. There's a lot there. And RP might not change a thing. What they can actually do with that lot, except maybe some clearing. I mean, I don't know, they got three on there now, but.
They didn't.
Okay, well, that's perfect. Yeah, so great. So they're grandfathered and, you know, he might be able to do some splits, but splitting out an undeveloped lot might be, might be tough whether there's RP or not.
I have property on Pole Island.
Oh.
President of the homeowners association.
Ah, cool.
Oh, so you know a lot about it.
So, yeah, I know a lot about it.
Yeah.
Southern tip, a lot of that is flood area. That's, that's more understandable regardless of how the rules.
Mm-hmm.
That makes it. Right up here. There's a lot here.
Mm-hmm.
A big lot, okay. That's the steep slopes on the island.
Okay.
It looked like there was steep slopes on the other side. Yeah, I mean, can you put the slope data back up again? So the red is 20%?
Yep.
Now, how did you determine it was contiguous or not? Because the whole right side seems like it's more than, than two acres.
Oh, it was, this is only the contiguous. The red is just the contiguous, anything that's contiguous, 20-acre slopes.
Okay, so then when you mapped it, why isn't it on both sides of the island? Because that side should be green, then.
Because the houses are there, so it got, it just got taken out for a limited residential.
All right, and so that sharp line is the lot line?
It's not the lot line. It got cut here because we weren't using that same calculation. We were just trying to estimate, you know, 500 feet apart for houses and, you know, where there was continuous houses, and then there was no houses anymore on this side. So we cut it past that house. That was, that was the logic I used.
Right, so you.
It can change, it could go down to that lot line. I mean, we didn't have a, you know, we were trying our best to, you know, to use, to keep the slopes where there was no further housing for some length of time, you know, some length of distance of shoreline that was more than 500. So anywhere there was more than 500 feet of shoreline with no house, and not another house, like right on the other edge of it, we kept the RP in.
Can I explain that?
It doesn't? Okay.
500 feet from that house.
No, I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't buffering the house by 500 feet. I was looking for another house within 500.
There's no other house than 500 feet.
Then we moved the RP to a reasonable distance from the house. There's no other.
It should have been the lot line. I might not have been clear on that.
Yep.
So if that's the line, it should be adjusted to wherever the lot line is. Because if that parcel's within 500, or that dwelling's within 500 feet of another dwelling, we, we just, the whole parcel, you can't map. It's, it's set up by parcels, roads, other major divisions. So that is probably information I didn't, didn't provide. But that would explain why there's a straight line and not... Yeah, most of that island's not getting RP. It seems like most of the lots on there already have a dwelling, so I don't know they could get a second. Anyways, I'm not really sure, from a practical standpoint.
Where is the lot line?
What, what it means?
Right, where the cursor is.
Right there.
Each lot is a little over five acres.
So why didn't the RP go to the lot line? The answer was...
I probably didn't explain it well. I mean, this is the first time Judy and I have, have Matt talked about this project again. I.
Because in the middle, we were trying to craft a rule that it would, the area would start at a lot and end at a lot line. And we were told we couldn't do that by our attorney.
The attorney did not, did not agree with that idea, no. So the next lot down, if we go by your rule.
How do you determine where you draw the line?
I don't know. So the next lot down, where it says Pol Island on there, there is a house, but on the other side of the island, there's RP. Are you saying that if there's one principal structure on the lot, none of the lot goes into RP? Is that what you're saying?
So in the interesting, in, in the interesting experience of Harpswell, where you have ridges and, you know, two sides of something, and a house on one side of that, and then the other side, if you do the whole lot, then the other side wouldn't go into RP? Which other side? This, you know, so if this, if this whole lot can't have any RP on it, even though there's a house on this side, then that leaves open this to be divided, and someone to be able to put a house on this side, and there'd be no RP on that side.
Well, what's, what's the five lot restriction? Is that like an association restriction? Is it a municipal restriction? I mean, how many dwellings are allowed on a five acre? Yeah, if you could email me that. This is, this is a good, this is a good, a good one. I mean, we, we, normally, I'm dealing with, well, not normally, but frequently, we're, we're looking at small lots, might not even like have dimensional requirements. They're just grandfathered. This is a somewhat unique situation with an island and large lots that, you know, may be able to be subdivided, and a house put on the other shore, if, you know, maybe even two, depending on, on the dimensions.
I feel like if we could explain this, we could explain anything.
All right, yeah, if you can send me that.
I don't think this is unusual in Harpswell for islands.
No.
Well, no, that's a good example, yeah, yeah.
We just have a ton of steep slopes, too. You know, Judy took out all the developed steep slopes because it was going to put thousands of people or something crazy like that into RP.
But there's also still a lot of large lots. I mean, this one is a bad example. But, you know, here's a lot where there's a development, you know, there's some buildings here. But then if this whole lot goes out of RP, then all the rest of that shoreline that has nothing on it goes out of RP.
I mean, that begs the question for me. What is the purpose of what the DEP, what is the goal of DEP? To meet with this line? What's it trying to do?
Not have development on, in floodplains or steep slopes, which, you know, can be very detrimental to water quality.
So I get that. I, that's what I figure. But it sounds like what, what Judy just said is actually not meeting that goal.
Now, where your lots are that large, I mean, you know, my, my, you know, my first kind of reaction is, is that we might have to limit that. You're right, because you, because aside, and you could have, let's say, 10 lots on there.
Yeah.
And it was all removed. So maybe we have to, and we say, lots will have to, we'll have to, I think we're going to have to just, yeah, refine that. Because I'm, I'm not usually dealing with lots that big.
And we don't have a ton of lots that big either.
Well, it still needs to be resolved. This is, this is what we need to resolve for when you're at the meeting.
Look at the map.
Yeah, that one on Birch Island, I think, is protected.
White Island, I mean, there's a, there's a fair, I mean, just having looked at every single parcel, parcel many, many times over. There's more than its fair share than there are in many, in a lot of the other towns that I've done shoreline zoning in.
Yeah, well, when, when Margaret asked.
It's way more complicated than any other town I've done.
What's the lady that owns the rest?
When you asked for an example, I just did a real simple one. It's like, there's a bunch of houses here, and then there was a bunch of houses there.
So I have two.
Helen Norton.
Yeah.
Those are huge lots in, on the neck.
So really, the question is, is what, what happens when the lot is large and can be subdivided? Is that kind of the fundamental question?
I think that's, I don't think that's a fundamental question, but I think that's one question. I do have a question, though, Jeff. Were these resource protection rules originally developed for freshwater wetlands? Because I feel like they don't really capture the issues that we have for coastal wetlands, like the steep slopes, the floodplains. I just feel like it's, it's really hard to apply them to the town of Harpswell.
I couldn't say why, how they were developed. I mean, that's all 70s and 80s.
But you don't know that they were originally for, like, ponds and lakes and rivers?
Um, I, when I look back at the old Chapter 1,000s into the 70s and 80s, it's, it's pretty much freshwater and coastal. They were looking at both at, at the time. And whether or not it, it works or makes sense is more of a legislative question
Yeah.
than it is, um, kind of like a, there's only so much I can do, and I'm doing it now to try and make it work as best possible. And apparently, there's been resistance for this for, for quite some time. And, you know, that, there, you know, why doesn't it work? Why doesn't this work for Harpswell? Why does, I mean, RP, not, just forget about our discussion of, of, you know, currently developed. Why, why didn't it work?
Um, I just feel like because we're coming up with a bunch of little tiny slivers of land, especially with the steep slopes, like, look at all those little slivers that are now in RP. And that is really hard for homeowners to understand and for us to try to explain to them.
So what are we talking, those are like, those little slivers are two acres of contiguous slopes of 20%?
That are within the shoreline zone.
And they're not developed.
Right.
And, I mean, and they, they seem to be not very deep, 100 feet deep, 200 feet deep. It's hard for me to gauge the, the depth of some of those slivers.
How wide they are?
How wide they are, yeah, if you'd measure from.
585 feet.
Seems odd to me that you have, usually I see it on the shore, and then it, I don't...
This is what the, this is what the patch was.
What's the middle one?
There's a ridge here.
Ridge.
But it's not, you know, the, it's not 20% up, once it gets up here, but it's there and there.
Yeah.
That's where they wanted to put the, put a attainable house.
This is, so I used the LiDAR data. And I made it into three-foot pixels, and then calculated the slope for each pixel, and then...
So a lot of them, are you seeing less than 75 feet, these, I mean?
The width?
Yeah, the width.
Yeah.
Of what, the remnant, once you've subtracted everything based on currently developed? And you're leaving little slivers, you called them? What are, you know, what are these slivers? What are the, the depth of the slivers from the water? Are they like on a single lot? Are they?
Well, this, I mean, this one, it goes across, but the, that's just because the shoreline zoning, you know, the coast goes out. I mean, the, the actual, actual 20% slope continues along this ridge.
But they're outside the shoreline zone.
Yeah, you know, and this little piece here comes along this side of the ridge. The only piece that shows up in shoreline.
Mm-hmm.
There's not, there aren't tons of those. I mean, it does look a little weird, like, on these sides.
Let's go back to where, where you were.
Yep.
And some of those ones right on the coast.
Yep.
What, what are we looking at there for like dimension-wise? Like, how many feet of shore frontage? What's their, you know, kind of depth?
So, from the parcel line, 32 feet.
They're 32 feet deep?
We're just, there's a lot of steep slope on our coastline. There just is, and...
Yep. That slope follows along.
So they're not 75, basically? There's, most of that is less than 75?
And that's true. I would say a goodly chunk of.
So a lot of that area is, oops, sorry.
It's restricted.
And you have à la, à la cutting restrictions would apply, right? The point system and everything. That might be something we can...
What came up that I remember at the meeting was one woman who stood up and said, "There's a row of lots. This one has a house, this one has a house, this one has a house, mine doesn't have a house, and now you're telling me I can't build on it." And that's the kind of thing we need to be able to explain.
Oh, you know, where's the?
Understand if it's law, we get that. But people are still going to be unhappy and need to understand. We can understand.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's tough. That's, that's zoning. That's, you know, like, as times change, you know, the zone changes, things change. And what you could have, just the other week before the law went in the fact, you, you can't have, the person next door can't have that.
Right.
I mean, that's, kind of comes along with the deal, yeah. They're grandfathered, that, that's kind of grandfathering, and that, that can be a tough thing to swallow. But we're not taking this lot, this one lot that's left. It just has more restrictions. We're allowing them to build on it. It might not be the, the big place they had dreamed about their whole life when they retired, but that's just how the law works. I mean, I can't change that.
To Courtney's point, it seems like we're being asked to meet a deadline, we being the town, a deadline that has been imposed at several layers of government. But we don't have an adequate understanding of how the rules apply in Harpswell. And we don't even really have an adequate understanding of how they should apply in Harpswell. And I, I find that very disconcerting, because we, we just cannot risk, I don't think, undermining public support for this, public understanding for this. We will undermine our credibility as a local government and as a planning board if we can't really explain this, justify it, and back it up. And I, I'm not, I'm, I feel like we're caught in a vice, because we, we have a deadline that we're supposed to meet without adequate understanding. And that is, I'm not prepared, as planning board, to, as a, as a chair, to recommend to the board that we move forward on this, because we just destroy our credibility. And...
Yeah, well, we're working on that now. I mean, there's some things, like this last question we had, there's the last lot standing or remaining undeveloped, has all these restrictions nobody else had. I mean, that's, doesn't matter what kind of zoning you're talking about. I mean, you could change something.
I had as an example.
I'm trying to remember. I don't remember where this woman was from. I just remember her standing up, and she was very frustrated, understandably so.
She might have been from... That is a great example. I saw, I just have a similar example now there.
Well, what are you going to do when they come to you? Are you going to tell them they have, they can only build a 1,500, 1,500 square foot house?
But also, there's restrictions about this.
That, there are. The flood, the flood ordinance has restrictions on what you can and can't build.
And, and, you know, just from a practical standpoint, there's a reason that that's the last undeveloped lot. The reason is that it's not, it's not a, as marketable as the other lots.
That's what we're seeing a lot of, is a lot of land that nobody would have ever thought of developing before is being developed.
Judy, will you put the flood zone on there?
It doesn't matter. Got to have it all.
I know, exactly.
Exactly.
But all the other houses are in the flood zone, too, I assume.
No.
No, just a low spot.
I mean, just because it, it's a lot on a, on a map, doesn't mean that all land is not created equal. And that's a really hard concept for folks that own a piece of property that want to do something on it, especially if they could have a day ago, but now we're being told they can't.
Yeah.
It, it just puts us in a really awkward position.
But there's, there's two different types on the, on the screen.
As of today, that's not in resource protection.
By definition, it is.
It is, it is.
It's just not mapped.
If it's not mapped, it's not showing on the map.
I mean, by, but by definition, or definition.
It has to be shown on the map. Pretty sure your ordinance is going to say, "That's showing on, that's showing on."
It's not, it's not.
"That's showing on the map."
If she pulls a permit before we do this change, she wins.
Exactly.
Yeah?
And you have to give her the, you have to give her the permit.
See, I thought that if, if it said resource protection by definition, it was in it. Because we have the definition, we, you know, our ordinance says what's in resource protection, so we go.
I think you're referring to the section that says, "It, it's not exact, and you can, if it's not on the map, where is that section?"
It does say that, that the flood zone is not mapped.
Interpretation of district boundaries. But that one is the depiction of the RP district and all shoreline districts on the maps is illustrative of their general location. "The boundaries shall be determined but by measurement from maximum high-water line." Yeah, so you could make the argument that even if it doesn't show on the map, you have to do that, but...
But also...
Not shoreline zoning, it's section eleven point one, official shoreline zoning map. The areas to which this ordinance is applicable are hereby divided into the following districts as shown on the official shoreline zoning map, which are made part of this ordinance. So if it's not on the map.
Except, except the flood zone.
Why is it mapped as now? It's mapped as LR.
But then we have an.
Or limited shoreline.
But it does say, uh, "The most recent version of the flood insurance rate map prepared by FEMA is considered to be part of the official shoring, shoreline zoning map for the purpose of identifying the resource protection district adjacent to tidal waters." So there is.
Got me there, that's, that's, it's a Harpswellism.
Yeah, and then on the next page, section thirteen point one, number two, it does say, uh, "For the flood zone, whether or not these areas are depicted on the official shoreline zoning map." So at least for the flood zone, it's in RP regardless of whether or not it's actually mapped. The rest of them are.
I think that, I think.
Just the flood zone.
Yeah, I think you're gonna, you could be challenged on that, because, I mean, the department's interpretation has been strictly on the map, but.
It's remarkable to me that nobody's ever come to the Board of Appeals in the last five years.
Really?
With an argument about where the boundary is, that's one of our duties.
That's correct, that's correct.
We haven't updated it since twenty thirteen.
I, I think there's a legal case here, right, and, you know, Margaret may very well win it, I mean, I can see your point, I mean, but I don't know. I mean, we're talking court, so.
Well, they have to go to appeal sport first.
So Jeff, have, have other people come up with, I know that we're not supposed to compare ourselves to other towns and what they're going through, but have other pe, towns come up with maps that look like ours, that have, like, little areas and stuff in the RP?
Um, I, what I see more is like, if you have, like, a slope on the coast, and it's a small slope, usually it'll be like a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five feet in, and it'll, like, run for a long distance over several properties. This, um, what, what you showed there, where you've got these little, like, the actual shoreline does, but once you take away everything that we've talked about taking away, what we're left with is these little things. I think that that will not be a problem to resolve, as far as, as long as you've got, um, the cutting standards, slope standard, or the point system and all of that, and because at that point, there's really, because everything outside of there is gonna be shoreline, just your shoreline zone. So having that little sliver of seventy-five feet for twenty-five feet just doesn't make any sense. You can't build there, you've got a point system, they're not gonna be clearcutting it. I don't see that as a problem. Um, I'm.
I think some of the issue is, is the data. I think previously, when we were, at least the last round of shoreline zoning maps that I did twenty years ago, were being done by using ten-foot contours from USGS maps. So people were guesstimating twenty-foot slopes and how much contiguous, contiguousness there was of those. LiDAR data gives us a whole nother.
Yeah.
Round of, of, of detail that we didn't have before. So one, I suspect that all the towns that I'm doing now, I'm doing the same thing for, so they're gonna get more of these thinner areas, because we can identify where the twenty percent contiguous slopes are now that we couldn't identify before. They have much more detail than we could before, so that's gonna, that is gonna start showing up in places. And I'm doing it for at least five towns right now.
Are you really?
Yeah.
Or have they asked for similar things that we asked for? Oh.
Yes, but they're not as complicated.
And when was, have they, have, for those towns, has it been a while since they've done their map, or is this, like, something they, yeah, kind of like us, it's been a while?
Well, I think, you know, at some point, you had said that there was another way of looking at the five hundred and one hundred that sort of focused on lots as well. Another definition.
Well, it, it's, it's dwellings, okay? What I had sent before, I'll read it, even though it will probably just confuse everything. Structure per, uh, we had, which have fewer than one principal structure per five hundred feet of shoreline or frontage for areas that extend more than one thousand feet.
Yeah, we have that.
Yeah, yeah, so what I, what I'm coming with today is, what, if there are two structures, principal structures, within five hundred feet, the area can stay LR. So you look at the structures, and if there's structures.
Why don't you say that again, so I can write that one down?
Two principal structures per.
Two principal structures.
Within five hundred feet of each other.
Five hundred feet.
It would be considered developed.
Other.
Currently developed.
And how does that extend?
That's right.
Either side of those two structures?
Okay, let's say we've got the two structures, okay, and that's it. Those two lots are out of RP.
Lot boundary?
Yeah, you'd have to go by the lot boundary.
The lot boundaries of the structure.
Yes. Would be, because that's how you have to do your map.
That's a good example.
Otherwise, you could probably come up with a different rule, but I think using lot lines is a lot cleaner. But it might be tough on some of these examples that, on, I forget the name of the island, where you've got five acre lots that, that are gonna be subdividable in, um, a few years. There's, generally speaking, not that much land, shoreline available in, in southern Maine. This is gonna be huge.
But if we don't go by the lot lines, what, what we saw happening is, is it's just a creep down.
Exactly.
And because you build one house and it's okay, and then the next house gets built, because it's within five hundred feet of the first house. And, and so that, the continual RP mapping, as we, the next time.
If, if you've got, okay, so you, let's start from the very beginning. You've got, you've got this lot, this is a built, this is a built lot.
Yeah.
And it is or isn't an RP?
It's, it's not right now.
It's not right now, okay, and then somebody builds next door?
Yeah.
On this lot?
Right.
So what's changing? It, it's just shoreline right now.
Right, neither of them are.
Within five hundred feet here, and then somebody.
But it's continually eating up.
Okay, so we're starting with, we're starting with, uh, this is an RP, and then somebody comes in and builds on this lot, and it's not RP? And so then, that you're saying that this would convert to shoreline? That, that's the, yeah, okay.
And the other thing is.
Which one did you convert to shoreline? I thought one was an RP.
Well, if this was RP, then the one next to it was an RP, then they built something within five hundred feet of this, then this is no longer in, um, limited resident, no, in RP.
Right. And the next time we map, we have to take it out.
Right there.
Well, and what's even worse, I think, is that we have the limited to fifteen hundred square feet limitation in RP, so someone builds one of those.
Then it's developed.
Then it's developed. We have to take that one out.
No, no, that one doesn't come out. That's, that stays, um.
Where does it stay?
Putting the whole, like, currently developed, that would stay, it would be getting developed under the, um, RP standards. It's not changing it.
Even though it's a principal structure?
It's a principal structure, um, and that would, I mean, it's on a, on a lot. But I see what, I'm beginning to understand. I struggled with that last time.
Yeah.
I'm beginning to understand, but if it stayed, if it was, oh, RP, and they built a fifteen hundred, special exception, somebody comes in, it's, the, the question is, is what happens if somebody comes in next door and then all of a sudden, they're within five hundred feet?
And how your neighbor can have that much, your neighbor's building can have that much of an impact on your property.
And that, we have a lot of areas that are built up, like Lowell's Cove, for example, but there are lots, uh, that are next to it, like Dixon Point.
Yeah, I'm thinking we might need to.
It just creeps right on, right around it.
Come up with a density, like an existing density, something more than just five hundred feet, maybe that's too simple.
Our, our attorney or.
The intent is, is these highly developed areas, not large, empty lots that, I mean, I, I think we have to, we have to think about that, but you have areas in town where, um, either the lotted development, they're all basically undersized or just right-sized lots, and all of a sudden, you're gonna try and put the RP on them? That's where we're trying to avoid it.
Yeah.
We're not trying to avoid it in these large lots, we're not trying to.
We're trying to avoid.
Play these games.
Yeah, no. Not here where these lots are big and they go all the way.
Yeah, so I, I think that's something that, yeah, we're gonna have to take a look at.
I mean, that's the other thing about Harpswell that's interesting, is that there's the, the road along the, the middle of, whatever, whatever peninsula it is, anywhere a lot, in the town, and then all the road, all the lots go like this.
Yeah, so.
So there are lot, most of the lot is out of the shoreline zone.
When we were working with AGA, she suggested, instead of using your definition of developed, we pick areas in town which are currently developed and just, and use those as an exemption, kind of carve them out. And that was her suggestion. She did not like your definition of developed at all. So that's just, you know, another approach, I guess, that we.
Did she put that in writing?
No, it was at a workshop.
Do you have any, any, well, I've worked with AGA, I, I respect AGA.
Yeah, she was, she's great, but.
She's been doing this a lot longer than me.
Yeah, she just thought, you know, this definition was problematic, and she thought the, the idea was more to, to carve out some areas that are already developed, so you're not making new non-conforming conditions, and then everything else, you know, would, but then we have to decide what areas counts as developed, and, and that seemed like, you know, could be just as political of an issue.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that should be a DEP kind of, kind of thing. I didn't, uh, I haven't dealt with this a lot. Like I said, it's been the FEMA maps, and this is the first situation where I've seen all of these variables on my mind.
Well, you see, we have a problem. No, no, we do. We have a problem, because apparently, we're already in arrears for complying with this. I wonder, for fairness purposes, if this could be put in a way we could explain to people and then have an extension for implementing it, so that the person who has the one house now is an RP, and nobody else is, because the houses were there, does she get to put her house there and go under the current situation without, because we're not giving them any notice. We can't even explain this.
Oh, you have to give legal notice if you're putting somebody's property in.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, this is just a fairness thing, that's all, that's all I'm saying.
What I would really like to see is a memo from, whether you folks put it together with Judy, whether Margaret and Judy and Jeff put it together, a memo really summarizing the issues that we have discussed today, the problems and unanswered questions. What DEP is going to be working on specifically, solve with regard to these unanswered questions. And as Courtney just suggested, some kind of official statement that says, "Given the complexities that Harpswell has, we will extend your deadline for so many months or whatever." Because we can't go to the town, given, given what the DEP, the unresolved issues that, that we can't answer, it just doesn't make any sense for us to move ahead and spend town money on further mapping and more meetings when we don't really have the answers. It's expensive for the town, and we can't do it. It's expensive in terms of our credibility, in terms of the dollar amount, and in terms of the time that people.
Well, Judy, can we do this on a lot line basis? Is that possible for you to do that?
Help me to do.
But I mean, you have the, we have the GIS capability of doing it on a lot line. I think what you're gonna find is that if we do it on a lot line basis, in, using the definition Jeff has just given us, that it's going to reduce the number of new properties. Except, and we could then explain it by virtue of the fact that the floodplain mapping is much more precise, and the mapping with respect to the twenty percent slope is much more precise than we have. And that gives us the justification of that, and whoever, I think we need to see what happened, and I think Judy needs to give, obviously, work with Christie to come up with a budget to do this.
Are you saying only vacant lots that meet the criteria would be, have resource protection zoning?
But I think that if you, if they meet the, if there's two houses within five hundred feet, they're gonna get excluded as developed. I think we keep the developed one, because a lot of the area that we have is developed, but it's gonna show up on the big lots, which is what we want to have. And, and the thin strips don't bother me as much, because as long as they can build, you know, upland, that, that's not a problem. It shouldn't be, it's not a, it doesn't affect their value.
It'll be, it'll be a problem for, for Tim. I mean, because somebody's gonna go in there and cut, and the neighbor's gonna say, "Well, that's RP."
Yeah.
So I, I think those, that's, that's a simple, I, I don't see those being.
I don't see it.
Problem, and I think we can get rid of those. Um, to be quite honest with you, I think that the way DEP is approaching this is, uh, is pretty broad. I mean, if we just start looking at areas that, you know, you'd have identified as, you know, there's a lot of houses there, I don't know how many, ten per acre, let's say, just, it's a really, just only apply this to dense areas, that whole island's gonna be RP.
Right, totally.
This is a good deal, but we can, we can look, you know, we're not making deals, but, you know, we can.
We want to do the right thing, Jeff, we're just looking for the.
As you zoom out, you can pretty much see where the density is.
Yeah.
But then you come over here, and that's where it gets different. The neck is the worst, by the way, but there are sections of the worst that have the same thing. But it, it sort of pops out to you.